10:00 AM, Michigan Court, county administration building 200 I take safety suite 106. First item on the GINs of indication pledge allegiance to the US Constitution of Texas and the Constitution of the United States. Gentlemen, ladies, here's all the prayer and the commitment for all the allegiance of allegiance. Father, I want to thank you for your love and first to us, I want to thank you for all the good things that you do for us, for our country, for our county. Father, I ask that you be with all the folks down there around the Houston area that during flooding and devastation that they had down there. Father, I ask that you be with the folks and comfort them and provide them ways to overcome the problems that they've got. I ask that you be with our first responders, continue to listen, protect them. I ask for all this thing.
(Inaudible) to the eye of the United States of America and to the public's precious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge to be Texas, one to beg for God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Second item on the GINs, call service. (Inaudible)
How do I do that? Yeah, open up boots. And I have them numbered, so. Yes. And thank you, I'm glad the audience is here, you can stop it. And then we have a lot of first responders here. Several weeks ago, when Hurricane Harvey was going on, I live south College Station in the county. I was up on this beautiful day, worrying about everybody in Houston, called my horse, he'll live on eight acres, and I was feeding, going to feed him, and he came loping across the pasture, across the hill, and any of you who like horses, I mean, there's nothing more beautiful. He got to the point where the flooding was that we had never had before, and he stopped, and then he fell. And this is not how he looked, he was underwater. I had on flip flops, I had to run down to the house and get on appropriate shoes. He's 27, I've raised him since he was, I started to say a puppy, but it wasn't what he was called. And, but he was an outstanding help of vet school, thought he was ten, so by the time I got back up there, he had moved himself, so his head was no longer under the water. And I had posted on Facebook to my friends, oh my gosh, and then by the time I calmed down, I called the Sheriff's Department, and everything just started. I had volunteer firefighters, because I'm out in the county, and then also the vet school showed up with two veterinarians and five vet students. But the person who got me through this was Deputy Bill Kristoff. He didn't wake up that morning knowing what he was going to be dealing with. And he got there, some first responders from the volunteer fire department, and all we could do was just sit and try to problem solve how to get this horse out. He was not trying to get up, and he's not really a sweet horse, but he wasn't trying to get up, so I knew that he was hurt, but we could, you can see his body there, we couldn't see his body. We just saw his neck up. I also want to recognize Sergeant Chris Fraley, who's back here, he's a personal friend of mine through dealing with animal shelter stuff and so forth, Lieutenant David Villarreal, thank you, and of course Sheriff Chris Kirk. Once the team got there, and my husband had been sick and was unable to help, you can go to the next. It should be like number two. I don't know that they're in order. It's okay. And I know a lot of you, certainly the 4H kids are animal lovers, I mean, this is just a story. So here's some of the firefighters, and Deputy Kristoff are trying to solve how to get the horse out of the water. He did feel well enough to try to bite Sergeant Kristoff from the ground, but we still didn't know what we were dealing with. I mean, we were problem solving, like, is it a leg, is it whatever? And next picture, number two or three. This is him in the pasture, I think after they've already pulled him out, and he wasn't trying to get up, he was very much alive. Next. And I love this picture, and I'm going to get it printed up for Deputy Kristoff, because it was hot out there, and I had just come off of beating cancer, and I was, you know, trying to stay out of the sun, but, you know, wanted to be with my horse, and so I appreciated him holding his umbrella over boots. Next. Yeah, somebody keep up with the (inaudible). Okay, next, that might be a repeat. And next. There's some videos. What's number three, is that the video?
Uh, yes, that's a video, that's a video, that's a video.
Okay, I need to show the videos, they're very short. So this is the guy's pulling boots out of the water. And, as I said, especially 4H kids, he's very much alive then. If you look, we could tell his back, right leg, something was going on, but we couldn't tell what it was. It turns out it was a broken femur, and the vet school couldn't even put him in a trailer and take him, be operated on. Had nothing to do with his age, it was the way it was shattered. So this is, these are the vet student, vet school, there's veterinarians, and the point of that, and those of you who are horse people, here my horse was on the ground, and vet school drives up, and this dang horse stands up. And if you know anything about horses, they don't want to be down. He stood up, he walked with me to the shade, and he stood there and got to be examined by the veterinarians. And that, I mean, each part of this just came together perfectly. I was the only female out there, I was not freaking out, I, we just had to solve this, and everybody did what they needed to do. And I didn't have a bunch of guys coming going, you need to do this, you need to do that. We were all scared to death. We were, we, this was horrible. And I know it emotionally impacted Deputy Kristoff, because it emotionally impacted everybody. And so I wanted to honor him today, as well as the department. Their jobs are many, and not just saving us from crimes and so forth. Sometimes they have to go out and they have to save an animal, which is part of his job, but he wasn't planning on this that day. And he was a rock, which of course made me a rock. All the volunteer firefighters, one of them is actually a rural firefighter in Bryan, everybody was out there just to do their job. And a lot of times when you have five, six, seven, eight people, it doesn't work that way. Everybody was professional, everybody did their job. And then when the vet school said that there's no other option, which we'd already kind of figured out, and I held his head, and I put him under, put him down, the five vet students cried, and then I just kind of cried. I said, y'all are going to be great veterinarians. I've lived here since the 70s, got A&amp;M, never left. I called a friend who got somebody to call me, and I hear this adult voice, but one of my former 10-year-olds I taught, and said, Miss Leunis, we're going to have somebody over there in 20 minutes to bury your horse. So this hell I went through, went from 10:30 to 3:30, and it was over, and it was professionally done, and I cannot thank Sergeant Kristoff, you know, Deputy Kristoff enough. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Judy, thanks for coming in and sharing.
Oh, sure.
It's a sad ending, but it's a great story to tell.
Yeah, and it had to happen, so, you know, we were all prepared, so, anyway, thank you.
Is there any other call for citizens' input and our concerns? Hearing none, we consider to take action on Agenda Items 3 through 17. Number three is proclamation 17-025 proclaiming October 1 through 7, 2017, as National 4H Week. I should have already got this signed, I got focused on that story and failed to get that done. I'll, we'll get it signed in just a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me first read the proclamation, and then everyone here can speak.
Yes, sir.
Whereas the Brazos County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the 4H Development Program of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 110 years of providing the experience-based education for youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to ensure them to become a self-directed, productive, and contributing member of our society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19, hail from diverse and ethnic socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today, were it not for the service of more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brazos County Commissioners Court hereby designates October 1 through 7, 2017, as National 4H Week in Texas, and commends the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for its many men and women who have made the program a success.
Judge?
I want to thank Judge and the Commissioners for all y'all's support for the 4H program and the extension program. This is our county council officers, I'm going to have each of them come forward and introduce themselves and tell a little bit about themselves, and we'd like to take a picture with, before we leave, if that's okay.
Good morning, my name is Riley Cass, I am the Brazos County Council Chairman this year. I am a senior at Anderson Shiro High School. My main projects include food nutrition, clothing and textiles, leadership, community service, woodworking, and then I also participate in livestock judging, and I show my steers and heifers across the state of Texas at the major stock shows, as well as my heifers at the national stock shows. I am also serving as a Texas 4H livestock ambassador.
Good morning, everyone, my name is McKenna Cattrola, I am a junior at College Station High School. I show rabbits and turkeys, and I also do food challenge and hopefully photography this year, as well as ag ID. I show my turkeys through county and major shows like Houston, and my rabbits through local county, so thank you.
Howdy, my name is Randall Lowe, I'm a senior at Rutter High School, and I'm the second vice chairman for the Brazos County 4H. I exhibit commercial steers and market broilers, and in the past I have shown market barrows. I'm also the president of the NHS chapter at my school, and I've shown at majors and county.
Hi, everyone, my name is Georgia Williams, I am 17 years old, I am a senior at Williams Scholar Academy, and I am the president for the North Brenner 4H Club, and I am the third vice for Brazos County Council. Projects that I do are clothing and textile, Heroes for Health, leadership, community service, ACT, well, science, tech, engineering, and technology. I also do robotics and community service, and I'm also a health, I mean, Heroes for Health Ambassador, and I am also a, I forgot. Thank you.
Howdy, y'all, my name is Hannah Chakowski, I am the 2016-2017 Vice County Council Secretary. I also serve as District 9 Public Relations Officer, and I am a Healthy Lifestyles Ambassador. I am a junior at Bryan High School. My projects include food and nutrition, health, leadership, public speaking, and I also show market and breeding rabbits.
Howdy, y'all, my name is Madison Gulvan, and I am a freshman at Rutter High School. I have been in 4H for seven years, and during those seven years, I have participated in livestock judging, market and breeding swine, market rabbits, food nutrition, clothing and textiles, leadership, public speaking, and so many more. I have shown gilt and barrows on the state level and county level, and market rabbits I have shown just at the county level.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Cattrola, I go to College Station High School, and I'm a freshman there. I've been in 4H for seven years, and my main projects include rabbits, turkeys, and ag product ID.
Good morning, my name is Dylan Outlaw, I'm a sophomore at Rutter High School, my projects include, oh, and I'm the reporter for the county council. My projects include market barrows, rabbits, and food nutrition, thank you.
Last but not least, good morning, everyone, I'm Rebecca Casey, I am the historian for county council. I am a senior in, at Rutter High School. I have shown in 4H for 10 years, and for those 10 years, I've shown rabbits at the county and Houston level, levels. And recently I've added goats to my projects, and I'm also the co-vice president of Rutter's Student Council.
(Applause) Have we done any passers? I'll walk right in front right now. Thanks, y'all. Thanks for my question, it was great, I did a great job. On behalf of all of the county staff that got the first, enjoy. Thank y'all. 4H is a great organization, grows leaders, and, you know, certainly takes a lot of time.
A great bunch of young folks.
Yeah.
Right, do you want to retain some of these kids, y'all?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure.
That's awesome.
interacting with young people in our community like that, that makes me sleep a lot better at night. Yeah. They're great, be great leaders. Okay, I think we passed that, okay. Number four is approval of the amendments to Article 3 of the Bylaws of Research Valley Partnership, Inc. Move for approval. Motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number five is approval of the debt management policy of Brazos County. Move for approval. Second? Motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number six is final plaid of lots 5A, 5B, 5C, block 3 of Old Spanish Trail Estates, Phase 1, being a replaid of Lot 5, Block 3 of Old Spanish Trail Estates, Phase 1, 9.272 acres, Old Wilcox survey, A-234, volume 459, page 175, Brazos County D records, Bryan ETJ, Brazos County Texas, located 304.
Move for approval.
Second, motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number 13 is expenditure of journal entries, 090044-090045. Move for approval, second, motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number 14 is tax refund application for the following.
I move for approval, A through E.
Motion to make second, approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 15 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY16, FY17, 51.1 through 51.6.
Move for approval.
Second, motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 16 is personnel change status, personnel action forms FY17, and then personnel action forms FY18, but we need to remove David Wilcox from the courthouse security. I think y'all will make a change in that next week, so that one needs to be removed.
Is that from, do you know if that's from the A or B?
It's in B, it's in FY18.
Okay. I move for approval, with the exception of Form Item B, David Wilcox.
Motion to make second, to approve A and B, with the exception of FY18, David Wilcox. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number 17 is claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 7159407, through claim number 7159675. Move for approval. Second, motion to make second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 18, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, 674 jailed, our beat in the last 24 hours, all ours.
We still got a lot out there.
Brazos County took their inmate home as a glorious day, knowing that they announced the work they're on. We're completing the paperwork for the contract, and we submitted later this week. We have 44 with ankle monitors. (Inaudible)
Number eight, seven is approval of the following community support contracts for FY 2018, Boys and Girls Club and B Brazos, Keep Brazos Beauty.
Move for approval.
Second, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight, request for the court's approval of contract with Guardian Tracking Employee Management Software for services to be used by the sheriff's office.
Move for approval.
Second, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is warrant approval of the resulting contract from RFP 18-001 Collection and Delinquent Criminal in Civil Court Cost-Fined Fees per the recommendation of the approved evaluating committee, and I think that was MVBA.
That's correct. That's correct. And I'll second that.
First, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is renewal contract 18-011R for representation of indigent juveniles with gender on the table. All terms and conditions remain same.
Move for approval.
Second, discussion. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you for the work there. Y'all do a great job, and we appreciate your continued service there.
Judge, we're pleased to do that service for the county and the citizens, and we've given you that opportunity here now, and, you know, we're pleased to do that work on behalf of the citizens. And, you know, we can give cases from the lowest misdemeanor to have jurisdiction given up until the most serious cases that we've seen, unfortunately, the past week and a half, and we have the expertise in that area, and we're ready to do it.
Thank you. So we have a juvenile, just arrested in one.
Yeah, we've handled, over the past several years, we've handled five, well, handled cases of that nature, and so we, we...
Y'all have got the experience to handle them all the way to that level, probably.
And I think there's only one other attorney that's handled a case of that nature, and I think she's retired a few years, so we're, we're, you know, we have a very capable DA's office, and we have a very capable defense team to handle it as well.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is renewal contract 18-023R janitorial services with A1 Professional Cleaning. Move for approval. Second? First, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is final plat of lots 5A, 5B, 5C, Block 3 of Old Spanish Trail Estates, Phase 1, being a replat of Lot 5, Block 3 of Old Spanish Trail Estates, Phase 1, 9.272 acres, Old Wilcox survey, A-234, Volume 459, Page 175, Brazos County D Records, Bryan ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, isolated, located in 4.
Move for approval.
Second, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is expenditure of journal entries, 0990044-09005. Move for approval. Second? First, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 16 slash 17, 51.1 and 51.6.
Move for approval.
Second? First, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is personnel change status, Personnel Action Forms FY 17, and then Personnel Action Forms FY 18, but we need to remove David Wilcox from the courthouse security. I think y'all will make a change in that next week, so that one needs to be removed.
Do you have that from the A or B?
It's in B.
In B, okay.
FY 18.
Okay. I move for approval, with the exception of Form Item B, David Wilcox.
To approve A and B, with the exception of FY 18, David Wilcox. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 7159407 through Claim Number 7159675. Move for approval. Second? First, make second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 674 jailed in our D in the last 24 hours, all arms.
We still got a lot out there.
The county took their inmate home as a glorious day, knowing that they announced the work there. We're completing the paperwork for the contract, and that'll be submitted later this week. We have 44 with ankle monitors and five pending.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Number 19 is a massive 50,000 possible future agenda. Just wanted to call your attention, in the governmental committee you met yesterday, and got you some information from Amy Dubose, who is the, excuse me, Association Executive for the Bryan Call Station Regional Association of Realtors. A lot of really great information about housing and housing costs and trends, not just in Brazos County, but in the surrounding county areas too, that I want to just get a copy for y'all, so you can take a look at it. Very interesting information. We have a massive 50,000 possible future agenda. There was a 1.8 acre tract of land that was discovered down in the middle of the area that belongs to the county, that we're probably gonna have to make a decision in the near future about whether we want to sell that or do whatever. We just, we didn't even know we owned, we owned it on its hours, so we'll probably put that on the agenda in the near future to make a decision about what we want to do about it. Again, no 20's call for citizens' input and our concerns. I didn't want to take away from you and me on this presentation, but I wanted to say too, I mentioned to the sheriff-in-chief, back during the summer, I was coming in from Austin on West 21, and coming through, and there was a lady that was pulled off on the side of the road that had a flat, and one of the sheriff's deputies, and it was hot out there. I mean, it was probably close to 100, and I know you guys all wear vests, and he was out there changing the tire for a lady on the side of the road. I was, you know, that's, that's public service, you know, and so I want to compliment you guys for, you know, the job you do, and I appreciate that, I really, when I drove by. So I don't, I don't have any clue which one it was, who it was, and maybe it doesn't matter. I mean, I know we recognized, you know, somebody this morning, but it, you know, in general, you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I'll pass that.
Okay. And then I want to introduce our new physician assistant, Kita Adams. She just came to work for us for the clinic. I don't know whether you, are you interested in saying anything? If you want to, come on up.
I'm Kita Adams. I'm a physician assistant, board certified. I've lived in the area for about 16 years. During that time, I've been privileged to serve with multiple groups, including St. Joe's, before it was CHI, and the Veterans Administration Clinic, as well as Dr. Sino's office, and most recently with Skilled Wound Care. And so now I'm starting a new endeavor, and hopefully we'll be seeing you all in the clinic for your health and wellness checkups, as well as some other preventative care, and maybe even acute illnesses, if you happen to get those. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here and start, to help start that clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll tell you, the committee that interviewed, we're really impressed with Kita. I mean, she's done things from babies all the way up to folks in nursing homes, so she's got plenty of experience. She'll be a great access. And I want to recognize again Diana Miller, she's the nurse for, for the clinic. We interviewed her a week or two ago, she's coming on board, so we're, we hope to have plenty open in the next two or three weeks, maybe. I don't know exactly when the opening date is, but it was around October 1st, but, and I think they're moving in furniture and that sort of thing now, so we're looking forward to it, and we hope that the employees will take advantage of no copay to be able to deal with those things, you know, the general things that, you know, that you might run into health-wise. And it's a health and wellness clinic, as well as, you know, for health needs, so thank y'all for coming to work, and we're looking forward to great things. Is there, is there any other citizen input and our concerns?